Welcome to the September tenth, two thousand nine Planning Board meeting. I will postpone any action on minutes of the meetings for July twenty-third and August thirteenth, was it? Until Barbara Griffin is present because she wished to be present.
Yeah, mine.
At both of those minutes.
Steve might have an extra.
Stephen, would you bring us up to date on development regulations?
The board has talked about changing the development regulations in a way that would, you would see it less often, you'd see them when something came in, and everything would get corrected and fixed, and then you would hold your public hearing on the final set that engineering was satisfied with, et cetera. Your development regulations are what control that because that's how you determine what process you want to do. There are two RSAs that are relevant. One has to do with accepting proposals, and you have to accept a proposal within thirty days, and I believe court cases have shown that meant when it came over the desk upstairs. So it's your next meeting or within thirty days. And once accepted, you have, unless the time is waived, sixty-five days to render a decision. And many times, obviously, the applicant waives that timeframe. The concern is that if you, it appeared as staff looked at how you could achieve your ends, the way to do that would be to stop and restart the process, which would take a second noticing. In other words, if you accepted an application because it was given to you, the plans are there, the drainage study or whatever those requirements were were there, but obviously not checked by anyone, you could accept those, continue to a date uncertain.
Hundred thousand.
And then renotice when everything had been worked out, hold a hearing and deal with it. The other way to approach that is to do a pre-application, that is make somebody check everything out until staff is fully satisfied before you ever see it. But you charge the applicant for that work. Megan is billed out at a rate per the Board of Selectmen, and if you were to use her pre-application and someone decided not to apply, you'd probably not recover the funds for that cost. So if you wanted to make sure you recovered the funds, you would do a two-step one and then an escrow gets set up, or they pay for that as part of their process. And I think before we set a hearing date for changing these development regulations, the board needs to give some guidance to staff as to which way they'd like to go, and obviously we then can set it up. So you could do no change, you could utilize the pre-application requirement where you're requiring them to check everything ahead, and Megan checks, I check, and we take three weeks before it ever comes to you for acceptance, and before it's, the acceptance requires that pre-application check, but then it's really done on staff time, probably. Because once an application comes in with its fees, as it is now, you then require an escrow that's going to pay for that review. So your second alternative is to start and stop the process and start it again and meet the RSA requirements. Or I guess, if there's another approach, you could advise us, and we'd be glad to do whichever way the board prefers.
Any board members have a comment or point they would like to make, reference this? I believe it's meant to try to consolidate the process so that when we see a project that's as complete as possible and has been reviewed technically before it gets here to eliminate a lot of the discussions that seem to drag on forever in trying to come up with an effective methodology to do that. And I think probably it takes a second thought for everybody to try to look at this and, given what Stephen has prepared here, and see if it meets some of those goals, if that's the goals of the board, to try to, if you want to call it, when we see it the first time, a lot of those statistical and engineering discussions, determinations have already been made and reviewed. If that's the, what we're trying to achieve is just going to do this for us. Certainly want to have some continued input before we go to any public hearing, I think beforehand, on this subject. So has any board member got anything that they'd like to bring forward for the edification of the other board members? Hollis?
I would agree, Alan. I think when we see the application, it should have gone through a thorough technical review. I don't think we should be debating technical issues. In fact, in many communities, planning boards don't even do that. That's all done beforehand. And I think it's the planning board's responsibility to look at whether or not it conforms to the planning objectives of the town. And I think we spend way too much time discussing and debating.
Technical issues.
Yeah, all the minutia of the technical details.
Steve?
Hey, I agree. I think it's a good goal for us to have to make this process more efficient so we're not wasting time with those technical issues, and that way, you know, sometimes when these issues are addressed, there can be substantial changes, and we're not looking at the same thing that was before us initially. So I think that we should certainly consider the options that.
Jim, you just came in, so I'll come to you last.
That's fair.
Yes, sir.
Well, I tend to agree with that because, and I guess I would ask this question just for verification, so that means that we would not be sitting here discussing and arguing or debating whether or not the letters, the letters height should be nine inches or nine and three-quarter inches high.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Wanted to make sure.
Tim, are you occupied?
Yes.
Okay. I'll pass then. Jim?
Boards have a board culture that evolves over years, and some of the culture of this board is a, still reflects time when the town didn't have the capable staff that it has now, which isn't a negative on prior staff, but as a town has grown in sophistication, it's also realized that it shouldn't pay for good people, and Steve and Megan are sitting on those examples of that. Yet the culture of this board still reflects some of the good old days when the board did its own review. And it's been hard, even though people change, cultures stick, and we still see that. People refer to other boards that don't, it's because they've broken free of that. And I think we need to continue to move in that direction. Now, it's easy to say and hard to do because maybe I feel strongly about the nine and three-quarter inch letters, but I still think the process should be designed to get us away from the micromanaging or micro-review of stuff where the staff has, really has the expertise, a better expertise to do it. So, because we don't get to the planning issues frequently that we really should be getting to, and I think of a lot of proposals that, applications we've looked at where we've bogged down in technical, leaving the big issue, which typically is density, which is the hard one, till the end out of procrastination and because we get diverted, when really that is the issue that this board should be addressing rather than the technical stuff. So I think anything we can do to take it, take that off of our initial plate is good. But I'm also mindful of Steve's concerns about getting applicants to pay, not doing review before money's on the table, and creating a procedure that complies with the statute. For example, Steve suggests one way to do that is to require an applicant to waive the time clock. We can't do that. That's, can't make that a condition of your regs, that you have to waive a statutory right. You can encourage them, you can beat them about the head and shoulders, but you can't put it in the regs they have to do it. So there's some line there.
Would it be the consensus of the board that we need to continue to work on this and that, in order to bring this to some fruition, do we establish some date when we want to take and hear this so that?
Let me ask for the board to tell me, do you want a process that stops and starts where you know, as you say, the money's on the table when all the staff is doing the reviewing? Or do you want it all done as sort of pre-application, require them to do it, and we can do it that way, and the time is shortened when someone finally gets to you?
Somehow, I think we have to encourage applicants to, especially with complex projects, to at least do preliminary visits with the technical staff that are going to be reviewing those issues, especially drainage, roads, those kinds of things. I think all too often it gets maybe done too final before it ends up being submitted or something. I mean, it's already set in cement before we ever see it, before any technical review is done, so that there's no input from staff, and I don't know how you encourage that.
Well, your best, your best way to do that probably is to require a review prior to submission, and then you aren't getting paid for it necessarily, but require it. And it's one of the requirements of submission is that you've done it, you know, that you've met, you've met with the staff.
I think that's a tough issue. I think that I'd want to ponder that one.
I don't want us to be giving free advice to help them plan their project so then they can submit an application. That's going to be an invitation to use free staff time. That's, I don't like that. Our staff time is precious, and if there's money on the table, give it out, or they're paying for it, but not on a pay basis.
If it's the consensus, I can put together the process to, you know, stop and restart, which would do that. Somebody would apply, that's when they pay their escrow for the reviews, set up their escrow, et cetera. And then you would continue to date uncertain, you wouldn't be concerned with engineering details when you accepted it. And those would get worked out, and it would come back. And the only reason I think it has to go to a date uncertain is whenever you try to guess a date, you miss it. You know, is three weeks going to be enough? No. Well, the applicant is engineer assured it will, but you always run that deadline, so it's easier to go to a date uncertain, renotice. And if somebody does not want to waive the timeframe, then you can act on it, you know, when it's in front of you. But you're obviously going to use up that sixty-five days or a good chunk of it in the review.
It goes by really fast.
On an immediate project, we do anyway.
We do anyway, yeah.
So can we give Stephen some direction?
Is that the consensus?
I would think that we need to work towards that, yes. Where somebody looks at it and we're protected in terms of the cost and the review time because you don't know what that might be coming in the door in terms of the complexity of the project. And they're going to keep getting more complex because it's just, that's the way it goes.
I guess I have a question maybe for Jim. Jim, according to the statute, when does the clock start?
Well, the sixty-five day does.
On acceptance by the planning board?
Yes.
Okay. So all of that review can be done upfront?
Off the clock.
Well, it needs to be, well, except you also have so much time to accept. And when it is handed in at the counter and the guy says, here's my money and my application, you have thirty days or next planning board meeting to decide if you want to accept it or not. And then after the acceptance, you've got a sixty-five day clock.
So it's a thirty-day clock and then a sixty-five day clock. A thirty-day clock to determine whether or not it's complete enough to bring to the board.
And I can do that if the completeness means I've got the plan, I've got drainage study.
Yeah, but we don't want that.
That's complete, but it doesn't tell you we've looked at anything.
That's what we're trying to get away from.
And we can't do that in thirty days. So if you're willing to say, in thirty days, it's complete, the guy gave me stuff, you know, okay, stop the clock, check engineering and then renotice. And I guess the question is, you know, do you want me to proceed that way or do you want to contemplate this?
Yes, Tim.
Well, if you're contemplating stopping the clock for these procedures, should you conversely set a timeframe that it has to be completed by so that it doesn't hang out limbo for a year and a half?
You do that many times when you do go to a date uncertain, but not later than, you know, a six-month period or something.
Depending upon the complexity of the project, maybe.
And that's fine. And that's not an issue to do that.
Again, I guess a legal question. Are there provisions in the statute to extend the thirty-day clock if there's mutual agreement between the applicant and?
Yes, with mutual agreement.
I've always interpreted as there is no express provision for extending the thirty days, but if you do it by agreement, then no harm, no foul. And then on the sixty-five days, yeah, applicant can request, we can't compel, but we can certainly suggest to the applicant it's in the applicant's interest to request it, which they typically take the hint. So I, yeah, for example, there's no provision for continuing an acceptance hearing, but we do because sometimes you have to, and we understand that. I'd be careful how you word your regs so they're not inconsistent with the statute, but I think there is some slippage in there as a matter of practice. Just want to do some editing to make sure there's no obvious gotcha.
And I think you have your consensus.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to skip around a little bit and maybe on item seven and eight on our, there's a village sign permit for Three Church Street, and if there's somebody here for that application, I'd like to take care of it because it seems to be rather short and to the point. Stephen, that's item number seven on the action items?
Yes, and both your development regs and by those, and also the design team of Main Street, both would recommend approval of signs. You have the color, it's black on a yellow. Everyone else has a black and white drawing. And this was a case where they worked with us ahead of time, we got the lettering largely. It started out as one of those with lettering that looked nice on a page, but you never would have seen it from thirty feet away. We'd recommend approval.
Someone?
Second.
Moved by Jim, seconded by our selectman's representative. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second is, item eight is a tower site restoration bond, and it's a replacement bond. The tower owner is changing insurance companies. It's had a bond on it since it was built, and this one would continue for the same amount. That's what you've required on all towers to have, twenty-five thousand, and would recommend you accept it. So move.
May I ask a question? Steve, are we, are we confirming who the issuer is? There used to be a, called the federal list of bonding companies accepted on federal projects that we'd look to, and after having some experience with some of our towns with bonding companies located in the Caribbean that they were not in business, I want to make sure, and I have to admit this name doesn't spring out at me at one of the household ones, but I mean, any of them are. I'd like to, I'd like that confirmed.
I can confirm it. I have not gone to a list of that nature. I did go to the website and got their address, et cetera. They exist.
They exist, or it's a start.
Yes, that I can tell you. And they're related to a series of companies that are all interrelated, and that's real, you know, because I recognize that from other organizations, but I have not gone to a list for sure.
I'll amend my motion then to, subject to verification by.
Okay.
They're reasonable.
So we have a motion by Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
I can look for that on my website.
Okay, website, yeah.
Is there any other immediate things before we get into it? We have also a short presentation, and I say short, from our.
CIP committee.
CIP committee. Who is speaking for the CIP? Tim or Fred?
Tim is the chairman.
Well, I didn't know, but maybe you wanted to speak.
You don't want that.
I move we let Tim speak.
Tim, you have the floor.
Everybody has a presentation report here in front of them. The numbers on the presentation report are a little mixed up, so I can read the corrected numbers or I can supply you with a corrected form at a subsequent meeting. The numbers are just, they were taken from the wrong columns for the totals. So if that is not going to present a problem, I will continue with the report and ask the committee to accept this and pass it on. And to also duly note that any discrepancies will be corrected prior to it being handed off to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee.
Are there deadlines on the submission, Tim?
I don't know. Steve?
The Board of Selectmen, the Budget Committee would always like them as soon as possible because they're starting their budget process.
Already started.
They have started already. They have used this, even though you haven't acted on it, as just a base to start from. And obviously, once you act on it, they'll have a formal base to work from.
Steve and I will correct these, they're only wrong on the report, they're not wrong on the matrix, so.
Right.
So I would be reading an incorrect number, so I would choose not to read the entire section on the first page, which gives all the numbers.
That'll save some time since we're already.
Kind of boring, anyway. What it boils down to is that last year, we received large requests for appropriations. The, we pared it down by about two million dollars and passed it on to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. They pared it down a little more for the voters to approve. This year, we were in the same fix. We had a lot of large requests, and after our meetings and debates and shuffling things around, we are actually presenting a larger amount to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee than we did last year. We feel that the larger amount reflects a need that the town has, and it was backed up by the request forms which prioritize the requests. So we were not as, we're not able to cut it down as much as we would have liked, but we do believe that the number that we are forwarding to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee represents real needs for the town. Police Department was as usual. The Fire Department has asked for a new engine, and we have also decided to try to get the voters to approve the funding for a capital reserve fund for the Fire Department. Public Works was pretty standard. We did push out a couple of their large purchase, large priced items that they wanted to try to keep things a little bit on the more affordable side. Parks and Rec is as usual, they don't ask for very much, and actually, there's nothing, no requests at all for this year. The Administration had a large request in addition to normal items for building repairs and maintenance. There is a upgrade in the computer system that's being requested by the Administration, and the, it was documented and presented to us by the Finance Director, and we felt that the need was real, and we forwarded that item on to the committees to be reviewed. The Library, we pushed out their parking lot, the request for their, as well as their bonding for their addition. Conservation is as usual, Historic Commission, no requests. Planning and Economic Development, the rail trial construction has been requested for 2011, it's dependent upon a grant that they are seeking. Sewer Commission, I spoke with Sewer Commissioner Hooton before the meeting, there are some discrepancies in the matrix regarding the items that are, were supposed to have been the dollar figures supposed to be put in, so I'm requesting that this be passed on tonight. The Commissioners and Steve will get together and correct the matrix, but since it's a user-funded agency, it does not affect the town budget deliberations. And the School Department shows a slight increase over last year. As I said, there were a few incorrect placements of funds in the matrix, but all will be corrected prior to the submission to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. So I respectfully request that you accept the matrix as the CIP Committee has presented it and pass it on. I would like to thank Fred Platt for his many years of service to the committee. He has served as Chair and Vice Chair for the last, in one capacity the other, for the last five years. He is going to leave the committee this year because he has other obligations, so I just wanted to publicly thank Fred for all his help, as well as all the rest of the members of the committee. They include Vice Chair Fred, Earl Carroll, Matt Monahan, Bill Gordon, Budget Committee Representative Roger Richard, School Board Rep Sue Tremblay, Selectmen's Nick Campesano, and our special thanks go out to Steve Griffin and Jan O'Connell of the Finance Department. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Just one comment. Several times, Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee were referenced, there are four executive authorities involved, the Board of Selectmen being one of them, the School Board is another, and actually, five, the two water precincts and the Sewer Commission. All of them are involved.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. I know it's no fun preparing budgets. Any comments from the board, other board members? Is there any questions, reference quantity, sums, and dollar amounts, distribution or Is the board in a, ready to make some type of a motion reflecting the CIP proposal?
I think it was noticed you might inquire us the public in case the public wanted to speak, in terms of its noticing.
Okay.
It's not a required hearing, per se, but.
Anybody from the, in the audience wishing to speak in reference to this proposal? Seeing none. Is it something we want to take and review and consider a little bit more detail and vote on the next meeting?
The problem with that is it delays the, passing it on to the board, which would really like to have it.
Understand that, but I understand they already have it, so.
Well, the matrix was, was in the packet, so, yeah.
Understood. But I see people reading it in detail.
I will provide all the members of this board with a corrected first page of the prepared statement that was passed out tonight, so I will correct all the numbers and give it to you at the next meeting. They're just written on the paper wrong, they're on the matrix correct.
Understood. Jim?
I guess the question always arises, well, if things are left out and I don't see anything, but when events are pushed back, what, given that you've got multiple departments, how you, how you choose, I get some, you know, in the past, there's been, this isn't a reflection on the current group at all, you know, prejudice for or against certain activities, and school sometimes is a whipping horse, and sometimes other departments are. And I just, I guess I'm looking for some assurance that that kind of treatment is of treatment is in our past, and that, you know, it's, we have applied to a, the same standard on, on everybody and not, um. Probably some favored departments over others.
Is that a statement or question, Jim?
I think it's a question, I'm not, I'm not making it as if, as if, I hope it's not the case, because I don't think it is.
Did you want to say something else?
Well, are you talking about capital expenditures, you know, like for buildings?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the pen, it's, again, I'm not saying anything recent, but there, I, go back a few years, I name names and put them up against the wall, but, but there has been some, you know, some views expressed that we don't necessarily see when we read the matrix, and, you know, we're not party to those discussion, but it's, it's a role of this Board to, to integrity in the process, so I think it's, you know, rather than just accept it, I just need, I need a little more assurance that, you know, that was, that was done.
Well, I can speak for myself, and I believe I speak for the Committee, every department was given equal weight. The School Board has come in in the last two years with almost no increased budgets, they have been very good about that. Some of their stuff was moved out this year, some improvements to the gymnasium floor, um, some, I believe a stage, uh, upgrade was part of something that got moved out a year or two, but as far as any of the capital projects regarding buildings, additions, any improvements of the building that are large tickets have all been sent along, they have not been pushed out, as I remember, by the Committee, Fred?
Um, I will agree with the statement that everyone is giving, giving equal consideration, um, and, uh, there's no biases towards or against any department or function, uh, we did push off library land and library building because, uh, given the fu- need for fire trucks and other things, that was not as pressing, they at least have their.
Parking lot.
Parking lot, right, I didn't mean land, but parking lot and building, they at least have their land, so that the, the development of a land can take some time without real harm for the town, um, and the DPW maybe took a, a worse ra- uh, hit than some of the others, frankly, because that's where the money is, um, and, uh, but that's, that's not any prejudice or bias towards the DPW, just trying to do something to levelize the, uh, the, the bottom line as best we could. What happens to it after the Planning Board approves it, it goes on to the, uh, various authorities, I cannot speak to it, I can only, uh, speak to the integrity of the CIP Committee and the Board process.
Jim, we, one more, if I may say one more thing, we, we sent on a larger, um, matrix this year than we've had in the past, which should reflect the fact that the projects were stayed in on the matrix, rather than pushing them out, because we all know that the, the, the town coffers have so much money, you know, it's not unlimited, however, there is a, a balance between the needs of the town for, for safety, um, health and different reasons that we have to try to weigh, and we, we feel that the items that were passed on this year, which is a larger amount than it has been in the past, were, were needed. Now, whether they will survive the next steps is beyond our control, and it's always been planted out, we are a planning tool, not a budget committee, so we try to plan,
I think I remember you usually says that.
Budget.
Steven?
As I say, when, when working with DPW and trucks and other expensive items, there was always cons- a conversation with the DPW Director about which are most critical and which could be moved potentially without harming, uh, his functions, so it was done in, in that, uh, that way very specifically.
We actually revised our submission forms this year to, um, request that each department, as it makes a request, prioritize them within their own department, and tell us what is going to have the greatest effect, positive or negative, on them to, by pushing something out, mostly negative.
Please introduce yourself, Chair.
Matt Monahan, twenty-nine hundred drive.
Matt's on the Committee.
Okay.
My first year, and I thought it went pretty well, I think we tried to do with the, the forms as well as the interview, a thorough job of quantifying the need, whether it was engine hours, whether it was, you know, miles or whatever, and I think that for my point, kind of drove a lot of it, is quantifying need versus wish.
Satisfied, Jim?
Any, any members from, any, do we take any public input at this point in time?
But you offered.
You already did.
There were very many.
You asked, nobody responded.
And no one responded.
I thought maybe some of this conversation would stimulate some, seeing none, members?
I'm making a motion that we approve the CIP recommendation and, uh, move it along.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion by Carlos, seconded by Jim, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that we thank the, uh, members of the CIP Committee who give up their bunch of their time in the summer to do this when the rest of us are off. Drink beer in the evening and going to baseball games, so.
That was a motion I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor and a second by Carlos.
Yeah, you can edit out the last part of that, but.
I'll make it sound nice.
Everybody's in favor, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll get into the regular scheduled agenda of presentations for this evening. And the first item on the agenda is Map Two, Lot Sixteen and Sixteen dash two, completeness review, final subdivision review, hearing for a proposed lot line adjustment, Michael and Evelyn Miller, Back Mountain Road and Stephen Drive Zoned Agricultural.
Just to, I think, uh, we've had some professional interaction with that family, actually, Stan.
Accepted. I don't believe that, uh, that it will impair your judgment, sir.
It's up to the Board, but I.
Board members?
I have, I have to unwork with him.
I work with a lot of people.
Well, I've certainly had.
I don't have a problem with it.
I've certainly had a lot of interaction as well, but I don't have a problem with, with hearing the.
Please stay seated. Evelyn?
Staff, uh, you want to?
Our staff, please, first.
Uh, would, would suggest that this subdivision proposal does not have a regional impact, and would recommend you accept it as complete and ready for review, and, uh, would then recommend that it be continued for its hearing, uh, September twenty-fourth, as it was noticed. That would be the big thick chunk.
Is it in here? I know, but I sort of have the plan. I hear this. It's not it.
Oh, okay, the plane would have been separate, so it's one of those planes. Is a lot line adjustment, it's, uh, two lots, and I'm moving the one line between them as one of those.
Could, could we have just, if Evelyn just stands up and just shows us, I always get confused by lot line adjustments, and just run her finger over the old line and the new line, so.
Evelyn, you, you have the floor, please.
We can instruct her not to say a word and just use her finger, but I'd just like to be clear in what's going on.
Careful, I'll use that finger.
Yeah, you have to carefully give it an option of which finger to use.
You choose the finger, that's our thing.
I have a pretty little speech, now, you just want the lot line, that's it?
Please.
Existing and new.
Okay. Can you see that?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the original lot that the farmhouse sits on, and this is a field and an orchard, and this is the new lot, the new line proposed, leaving, making the farm lot smaller, the farmhouse lot smaller, and increasing the size of the orchard field. That's it?
Thank you, Evelyn.
Nice story about, you know.
Save your script for later.
Save, save your script.
Tell us next time.
Board members? It would, uh, it would seem that, uh, we need a motion on item number one on the staff recommendations.
And to, uh, combine or separate, whatever your purpose. Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, we find that the subdivision proposal does not have a regional impact, accept the, uh, proposed subdivision for review and continue its further consideration to September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine, as was noticed.
Second.
Motion by Carlos, seconded by Phil, any discussion on the motion?
Point of order, Steve, Steve is voting, right?
Yes. I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, we'll see you on September twenty-fourth, Evelyn.
Paul, let your short, short, short speech somewhere.
The next item on the agenda is Map Four, Lot Fifty and Sixty-nine, completeness review, final subdivision review, hearing for a proposed two-lot subdivision, Bog Road, George Dick Perkins Trustee, Zone Residential One, and Wetland Surface Water Conservation District Overlay.
This also is a, taking a one new lot of an existing house out of a very large parcel, and, uh, would suggest to you that it does not have a regional impact, and, uh, would propose that you, uh, accept it and continue it till September twenty-fourth, as was noticed. I, I would note one other thing on this, I had discussions with the surveyor at the time, this is a, and, and I put some additional information in your packets, it's a large parcel that is on both sides of Bog Road, and it appears from what I saw as evidence, and it was suggested by Todd when he worked, talked to me, that it was one parcel, the way it's described, that that right of way on top did not subdivide it, and, uh, and what I'm suggesting is, it's one parcel unless they want to give us information suggests that we're subdivided, but I think it isn't, I think it's one parcel. And the second piece of that discussion is, obviously, you have a choice when you subdivide acreage larger than twenty acres into using the open space subdivision, or all lots are over ten acres, or are not over five lots total, kind of what you start with, and by doing this, where that lot that they would like to make is not larger than ten acres, they have automatically picked that option for their whole parcel, and, and, and I, when I talked to Todd, I trust that he made the applicant aware of that, so I assume that that's indeed what the applicant would like to do.
But not more than five.
Not more than five is where they've started, this side obviously has a lot of wetland on it, I don't know about the other side, it may not be very developed, although that may be quite what the applicant wants to do, but I, I just wanted to make it clear so nobody wandered in to that decision unknowingly.
And will that?
Mr. Maske.
Yes, sir.
Will that be noted on the plan then, so that future generations have?
It, it would be, and in fact, probably ought to include some kind of recorded document when it gets approved, so that some subsequent buyer can find it, but obviously, it, what's, what's the whole parcel size, eighty acres?
Uh, it's thirty point five acres.
On both sides.
Oh, both sides, a total, um.
It's about fifty acres, isn't it, or something like that?
Correct.
So it's, it's about fifty acres of land, and, 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 uh, a lot of it's wet, it's, it obviously is not making a problem for them, but I don't know what it's like.
It's just, future generations will claim their rights and.
Well, anyway. So, notwithstanding that discussion, I would recommend that you, uh, find that it doesn't have a regional impact, being a two-lot subdivision, uh, that it is, uh, ready for review, accept it, and continue it to September twenty-fourth, as it was noticed.
The, um, any questions from the Board members? Yes, Jim?
I'm just trying to read the plan, um, there are, are, where are the, where's the existing house, is it on this lot, is it up in the top corner?
There are two houses, one house.
First of all, to bring, bring the board and, and members of the audience where we're at, we're approximately, um, three quarters of a mile to one mile southerly of Bog Road from the intersection.
Your name, sir?
Uh, Richard Kohler, I work for Todd Land's Consultants.
Okay.
River Road, Route Thirteen, um, the intersection of Bog Road and Route Thirteen, travel three quarters of a mile to one mile is about the extent of, uh, frontage of the property. The existing farmhouse is right here, in the northeasternmost corner of the property where this, uh, little triangulation is, the parent parcel was bounded by stone walls, which I have marked in red here, and then along the frontage of Bog Road on the eastern side, this bold blue and red line illustrates the proposed lot to come off surrounding the existing cottage. Um, the dotted, um, hatch pattern here illustrates the existing wetlands, this, uh, this stone wall here is the southerly limits of the parcel, and is also the toe of slope off from, um, Leech Hill, um, just up slope from that is, uh, Evergreen above Lesnick, so we all know that that's very wet and sloping site, and the hydrology flows in a northern direction down and across the Perkins property, um, like I said, it's, it's highlighted here with the, uh, the stipple blue, so, about fifty percent of the lot is, is jurisdiction eleven.
Any other questions, the Board members?
That's probably all we need to know for now, so I'd move that we find it does not have a regional impact, accept it for review, find it complete, accept for review, and continue to September twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Phil? Any discussion on the motion?
Just, just.
Yes, sir.
Steve, the, the supplemental material, that's, that you addressed an issue that really wasn't raised just out of thoroughness and concluded, you know, and you and the opkin are in agreement as to your.
I, I believe, I believe we are, in my earlier discussion with Todd, uh, himself, it was that, yes, this was all one parcel, but I thought I needed to look further myself and either concur or not, and then, uh, provide that information.
Correct, correct, that's, that's our understanding at our office, um, the lot is two separate tax parcels, per se, but it's our understanding that.
That doesn't make a subdivision.
Correct.
Do we want to clear up any status on Bog Road through the property during this process?
It's, uh, it's given as an easement, uh, a right, the town has a right to travel down Bog Road so called, uh, across this property from the deeds that existed back to eighteen hundreds.
Jim?
Well, I would assume that, uh, Public Works is going to review this, and they may ask for whatever they decide to ask for in terms of right of way.
Right of way drainage issues, all of those will be part of the review.
Maybe increasing or something, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Move the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? Motion carries, see you on the twenty-fourth. Under old business.
Yeah, it should be, not September, should be.
Next item on the agenda is Map Four, Lot Eighty-seven dash six, public meeting hearing to discuss the final site plan review application of Placid Woods, owner and Woodland Trust applicant for a proposal to build ninety-two townhouse-style condominium units totaling thirteen buildings on the newly created Lot Eighty-seven dash six, Mountain Road and Bog Road, Zone Residential One, that's continued from August thirteenth, two thousand and nine. Also, I believe in our packet, there's item six was a letter from, uh, James Shakaroff, who's in Abada to the Woodland Trust. Do we have that here?
That is in your, the small package from tonight's meeting, it is in there.
It looks like this.
The lettering.
My understanding is that, at this point, the public hearing is still open, and, uh, obviously, we received a substantial package of information. I would hope that each individual has had the opportunity to review it for the points they wish to consider. Um, I would like to bring this to a conclusion this evening, if possible, and I would open it to the board's discussion at this time, even though the public hearing is still open for questioning and answers as to procedures and whatever. And Stephen, do you have anything to bring us up to speed on this?
Uh, no, I, I think that the planning issues have been put in the plan, the engineering issues have been changed, any, any that were had, uh, and it's time for you all to deliver it. Obviously, you had asked for the documents, that is, all the easements, et cetera, that's what was sent out to you, was a lengthy package.
Re-reading the meeting.
Those are all the documents. One, one tree each. And, and I think staff probably has no more to add, but to encourage you to conclude.
Mr. Chair?
Jim?
There are certain big issues, and then there are some, I call them tweaks, on the documents that are, we can go through, and have some questions and comments, but I don't want to bog down on that. I just, I guess I just want to reserve the opportunity to comment on them. But if we start there, we'll, we'll never get to what the, the main issues are, because they're not showstoppers, they're just tweaks. I'd like to reserve some time, but just to do that, but I think there's some bigger fish to fry than tweaking documents.
Understood. Any other members aboard? Ben, the public hearing is still open. What is the consensus of the board in terms of continuing the public hearing or closing the public hearing, or receiving additional testimony, or any new items of discussion?
Mr. Chair, since it was noticed as a public hearing, I think it's only fair that people may have come expectation they'd be able to say things that would afford them that opportunity, on appropriate caution from the chair, that we don't need to replow fields, but that would be appropriate for you, but...
All right. The public hearing is, is still open. We'll take public comment if it is additional or new information relative to this project. In that instance, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak about this project? And the chair will limit discussion to new items. Kathy?
Yes, my name is Kathy Hoopman, I'm in Abada, and I would like to introduce, um, information that I have been receiving from Attorney Jed Callen regarding the special exception. Um, for the record, Attorney Callen states, "I think the law is clear that the planning board has no authority to ignore, change, or waive a zoning board administration's imposed condition precedent for a special exception. Changing into a condition subsequent usurps the zoning board of adjustments authority to grant, deny, or condition a special exception. As a condition precedent that has not been met, the special exception was never issued. This is what the zoning board of adjustments decided, and it is under appeal." If the planning board decides to ignore that fact and call the condition precedent a condition subsequent, that implies that a special exception was issued, and the applicant merely has a follow-up of obligation. It cannot be done that way. The planning board cannot issue the special exception that the zoning board of administration denies or conditions on an event that has not occurred. Again, we are, we are very strong in our statement, and so is our attorney, that you cannot waive the special exception. It is a special exception precedent that was not met. I also want to bring to your attention that we never did come to a conclusion as to whether or not the people who live on Bell Road needed to be notified, as were the people on Mountain Road when the sewer lines went up Mountain Road. All of the abaders on this particular project were notified. If you try and waive a condition precedent, and if you try and waive the fact that your application requires that you have a special exception, as I stated at the last meeting under your development regulations, then you are, you are setting the town and the planning board into a legal frenzy, which would allow future developers to come into this town with applications that are not permitted within zones, and those applications would have to be accepted as complete without a special exception. And that is the, that is the, the grounds of what we are talking of tonight. Are you going to allow this application and future applications to be considered complete without have, without first having obtained a special exception? That is, again, as I stated to you, on your zoning board development regulations, that determination of completeness of the application, under, under this section, the sixth requirement is, a ZB application of notice and notice of decision for any required special exception or variances must be in the, must, must be part of the application. I am not going to further any more discussion on this. I think you understand the case that we are saying, and I think you understand, as board members, your responsibility to make sure that the ordinances of this town are abided by, and that you do not put this town in future legal positions by allowing this, this, this plan, which is not complete and has no special exception, to go forward. It must be denied as incomplete at this point.
May I ask a couple of questions, please? Are you, are you representing yourself or the ZBA?
I'm representing myself as an Abada.
And you referenced an attorney?
Yes, Jed Callen. He's been before you.
Has he written you an opinion that you wish to submit to the board?
I read you the opinion. I read you, I read you what he, he responded back to my input. Yes.
He's not here this evening?
No.
Okay. Any other members in the public wishing to speak?
Does that make a difference, if he's here next to you? Just...
Is anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, I'm John Pelton, and because this is a threshold question, and because it's an issue that has universal application, I would encourage the board to seek the advice of the town council, if you haven't already done so, and if it's appropriate to have Attorney Callen reduce his opinion to writing, we can do that and submit it.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Mr. Chakaroff?
Yes, as you know, Jim Chakaroff in Abada, twelve Bog Road. I submitted a letter, and I was hoping to have the board comment on it, but in addition to the letter, my new information, August thirtieth, I talked to Sergeant Chavet at the police department, and he, he conferred with me that there is a problem with pedestrians on Bog Road, and he says that it's part of his normal weekly routine is have him or another officer stay on Bog Road. He has stopped people, so we need to recognize that. And he also suggests, and put the radar trailer on the, on the road there, on Bog, twelve Bog Road, and they flat here, excuse me, come around the corner before they get to the others way to this place. Also, that was August thirty. September seventh, it's a Saturday or something, I forget. I was out cutting my lawn down there. I have a few good trees. I'm down there almost an hour, and while I'm there, I see there's a group of ten kids. They're all twelve years old, eight years old, six years old even, going by road towards New Boston. These are young kids, out on the road, having a good time on their way. There were several people walking by, some with their dogs, some jogging. There was a neighbor who stopped by with their vehicle and talked to me. Also, a few minutes later, I hear a car coming down very fast down the road. I wasn't there with a radar gun, but he was going well over the speed limit, thirty miles an hour. He comes around the corner, where you can start to see Bell Road and the Centrens Way, and he just guns it. And I'm standing there on the side of the road, and he just drives by me. I called the police department, and they trace him down to, there's a kid in Birmingham. I've seen that car before doing the same thing. I've seen other cars doing the same thing. So I know it sounds like I'm reiterating, but there is a problem here, and I'm concerned about it, and I'm concerned about somebody getting hurt. The officer came by to tell me that they, they had tracked this car down, and they were going to the speedway. I also informed, you know, I told him about the kids, the neighbors who are concerned, and I said, "By the way, there's a development going here, but there's going to be several more cars and lots of people, kids out there where they live on." And he obviously was not aware, because it's isolated, and he goes, he basically said, "Are you sure? Are you kidding?" So that is my new information, and I'm hoping this board will tell the public here, so if you put this away, that you have reviewed this, and you are confident it's not going to be a problem, and there are no further changes.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Kathy?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Reskaza. I'm an Abada, Director Abada to the parcel, and also a registered architect. I'd like to offer comments, reiterating that there is no special exception in place. It's, this board cannot create a condition subsequent. In effect, the request that this application has in the notes from the Town Planner to waive section two point E, two D, section, subsection six, creates a condition subsequent. Even on this title, it was a condition precedent, in effect, it was a condition subsequent, no matter what you call it. The Town of Goss Town Development Regulations require minimum design standards. Section six A one states that all improvements shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the Town Regulations and Standards, and shall be subject to the approval of this board. It continues in section six point A point three, under Standards and Specifications. This section lists eleven local, state, and federal ordinances that are required. It reads, "The standards and specifications contained in the following shall constitute the minimum standards for design and construction of all improvements." Goes on, section six A three, lists A through K, lists the eleven standards and specifications, such as the State Urban Hancer Manual on Drainage Design, Uniform Traffic Control by DOT, the United States Department of Transportation, Road and Bridge Construction Utilities, DES, and various other utilities and regulatory agency documents. However, the very first listing in our Development Regulations is the zoning ordinance by the Town of Goss Town. That's the very first regulation that is required for all development to be in accordance with. Requested legal description of the bounds and the easements. This was something that has been asked of this developer many times. It was discussed on numerous occasions before this board, and our conservation, the reasons of the applicant was that the legal description with bounds would be submitted as an attachment A. On page thirty-five of your packet that was presented to you tonight, you'll find the form that the applicant actually submitted. It is a boilerplate kind of an, an easement. It says, essentially, as shown on the plan, that will be the easement. We were told numerous times that we would have legal bounds and a legal description of the easement. If I have here as a, as an example, an easement that was prepared for this very same parcel called the Washington Street Easement. This was prepared, take one past the round, in nineteen eighty-six. In nineteen eighty-six, and it shows distances, reference lines to other lots, it shows orientations. It's, it's more of a legal description than what this applicant provided to you. I should remind the board that this applicant had twenty-three months to prepare this document, and promised it time and time again, yet he has still failed to complete it in a meaningful way. There are no legal bounds identified. The next thing is I encourage this board to carefully consider the volumes of papers submitted by this applicant for even tonight's meeting. On page fifty-five of your packet, you'll find section three point one one, Taxation of Common Areas. You turn to page fifty-five, you'll see it.
City man.
It talks about the common areas and the taxation of the common areas for this project. He lists Manchester as the municipality having legal authority to determine the taxation values for our property, here, for this town property. I say it's the applicant's responsibility to present clear and factual information for this board's careful consideration on the very merits of this application. If you go on to page sixty-two of your packet that the applicant provided, Article ten, section ten point one prohibits the public from entering the property, and the attention to detail and the responses provided by this applicant and his consultants have provided, have provided in response to the thoughtful questions that this board has posed, this place where he prohibits the public from using the conservation district and the walking trails is in direct conflict with the conservation's comments and the goals stated in the comments and the master plan. Together, these items cause cumulative reasonable doubt as to the forthright development of this project, as, as the developer has a test that he will do. I, I fear that the town will be left holding the responsibility for items such as failed stormwater drainage systems in this site, which is dangerously close, in dangerously close proximity to wetlands. And the most important thing related to the ZBA conditions is that we don't have road resolution on that roundabout. We have no high-density development on this lot. Yes, I just have...
We, we stipulated earlier on in the evening that we would not reiterate any former things that we discussed. We were looking for new information.
Okay.
You provided us with substantial new information. Please limit your discussions to new information and not things that we've discussed beforehand.
Okay. I would like to submit to the board the CIP proposed planning budget that was, it's actually been approved now, but this was submitted on August sixth, two thousand and nine. Item one hundred and seventy-four and one hundred and seventy-five are related to this particular rounded-out in question. They are expenditures of three hundred and eighty-one, I need glasses, I think, or longer arms, three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars or two hun, and two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to deal with the Pleasant Street Mass Road improvements and Main Street North Mass Road intersections. It says that this includes some partially offset funds from the Bog Road off-site improvements, but the key indicator on this is that the year that this is projected to be budgeted into is two thousand and twelve. We're in two thousand and nine, so that means that we're still three years off from doing this project in a, in a reasonable way, where this applicant is not encumbering the town's public funds in order to get his project done for his financial benefit. Professionals, the other items are, professional stamps are required. In the packet that you have tonight, the planning director has requested that those be put in as a subsequent... put in as a subsequent condition. However, when you carefully look at your whole packet, you'll see that the architectural drawings have been prepared. There are elevations, there are building plans, and they show the character of the bu- the building. What you should also be very mindful when you look at those documents is that they are not prepared by a registered architect. They're prepared by a draftsman who, according to the, um, the state of New Hampshire is a, um, joint board of registration and licensure, is not a registered architect. It's not on the rosters. He does not have the qualifications to design and stamp a multifamily townhouse project such as that. And this board does not have the authority to waive that life safety issue. Lastly, in closing, every town maintains the right and responsibility to evolve its planning regulations. Simply put, this development is too dense, too premature, and its documentation is too scattered to be approved at this time. The applicant has had more than enough time to get all of these documents together and he's failed to do so in a meaningful way. This shows, uh, that it's right for Gostown. It's not right for Gostown right now. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Any wishing to speak for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney in Nashville with Gostown Hollis. And I think you all have my letter, which was in your packet, requesting consideration of the waiver. And I think that the letter spells out the reason behind our request. I do believe that there is authority under your regs to grant such a waiver. Uh, I think that, um, the reason we're asking for the waiver, as stated in my letter, is to try to avoid uh, continuing back and forth. It isn't fair for the applicant to go to the zoning board again. First, let me state, we acknowledge we don't have a special exception. Um, but the purpose of my request on behalf of my client is, uh, we do plan to go back to the zoning board. We know you have, we have to go back because, uh, the plan before you is seventy-six units. It's not ninety-two units. The plan before you isn't anything, has material differences from what was before the zoning board. Um, having said that, uh, it's unreasonable for the applicant to go back to the zoning board until the applicant knows what the planning board, uh, feels about this plan. And, and I make that statement not lightly because we have spent, uh, some twenty months now trying to determine what is reasonable from the areas boards and commissions, the conservation commission, the planning board, uh, what do they feel needs to be changed in the original application? We've come up with those changes. Uh, if those changes and this plan meet this planning board's criteria for approval, we'd like to know that because that will then tell us, this is the plan we need to take back to the zoning board. It would be unrealistic to say that now that we know the process, that you can take a generic plan to the zoning board and then move back to the planning board. Um, there's no sense in us coming here and asking for your consideration on this issue, not knowing where you end up and then believing that we have a plan that's acceptable to the planning board, go to the zoning board. If we're successful at the zoning board, come back to you with the possibility that there are further changes. At some point, the process has to be defined and we're just asking you to define. If you don't agree with my belief that you have the right to waive and you choose not to waive, we ask you that you vote it as a condition of approval. Uh, I disagree with the statements that have been made about whether this board has the right and the classification of these conditions. I think the board does have the right to make a condition of approval. The plan was accepted at the time it was accepted. Uh, there's no special exception existed. So, that, that's my pitch on it. I won't go any further. You have to make the vote. I don't think it makes sense to make legal arguments to the board. The second comment I would have, uh, is with regard to the pedestrian issues raised. I think those are old and not new. We've had studies, we've had analysis, and we've had testimony. If there are problems out there, it sounds like there are issues that exist. There are speeding issues. Those are enforcement issues. The third issue is with regard to the meets and bounds concern. Um, I'm sure there are going to be other comments on my documents that I prepared. I take ownership of those documents. There are probably other typos in there. Uh, someone may have found them. But a typo from Manchester versus Gostown, uh, that was not to insinuate that Manchester controls what goes on in Gostown. And I apologize in that, for that. Uh, but I would hope that those issues could be clarified. Your counsel looked at them once, sent them back with some comments. Um, I'm sure they'll be fully vetted again. Uh, with regard to the public prohibited from entering, uh, that's really a framing issue because that's an issue that frankly, when I went back to draw these documents, there's a, there was some conflicting testimony. Uh, the public has a right to go through the walking path, but I wasn't sure, and I think Collis can shed more light on it, whether the conservation commission wants that land to be open, um, under the conservation easement, open to the public. And if it does, that's an easy change, just put it in. But I've had more and more towns ask me to insert in there, we do not want it open to the public because we don't really want to be responsible for the public coming and going in there. It's conserved, it's protected, and that's our major goal. But, uh, we as the property owner have no dog in this fight. We don't care which way. The planning board wants it or the conservation commission wants it, either way. As to the professional stamps, uh, any of the plans that aren't stamped, in particular the building design, obviously before we get a building permit, need to have professional stamps, the architectural stamps, and will be. Uh, these are renderings, um, submitted under the regulations, just for that purpose. And thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Kathy, you give one last shot.
I, I'm sorry. During my presentation, I was remiss and I wanted to hand out the CIP document that shows, um, in support of my testimony. It shows the.
Board has it already.
Board already has that in hand. Anybody else wish to speak? Members of the board? I'm up. Jim? Um, I was just going to ask that question of the board. If we are in a position to close the public hearing rather than my just saying the public hearing is now closed. Board members? And the public meeting is now closed. Tim?
In respect to Kathy's, uh, statements about the lines in the CIP, line one seventy-four does in fact address possible Pleasant Street Mass Road improvements for a three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar amount. Next line down is reconstruction of Main Street and North Mass Street. And she put in two hundred and thirty-four thousand as the number that's on the matrix. This line in the matrix is not related to the Pleasant Street intersection. The two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is a design number for the Public Works Department to have North Mass Street and Main Street redesigned. The following two numbers are for the actual construction based on DOT grants, which the Public Works Director does not believe are going to be available. So, I would just like to correct the record because it has been entered into the record at this point that only line one seventy-four applies to Bog Road. The two hundred and thirty-four thousand does not. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we could have a discussion on several points, but I think probably the primary is, would be, what are the concerns of individual board members, starting with Collis and going around the table?
Well, my primary concern and the threshold issue that I can't fully resolve in my mind is this whole ZBA, whether it's been got a special exception or whether it doesn't, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do they come here first? Do they go to the ZBA first? I mean, I would like some clarity with that issue because, you know, personally, we beat this thing around the barn a number of times on technical issues, so I'm comfortable with those. But as far as, uh, the whole ZBA special exception and whether they have one, whether they need to go back. Yeah, they say, I hear them saying they are going to go back, but they want to be here to make sure it's a good plan first. But, you know, I'm, I'm just really uncomfortable with that and I don't know if we ought to seek legal opinion as to what our process or process, excuse me, should be from this point forward so that we don't back ourselves into a corner.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I think that's the same issue that I'm struggling with in my head. I share Collis's concern. I, I don't know if, um, we necessarily need to seek legal opinion on it, but I would like to hear, um, the other board member's thoughts on it. Maybe that'll help, help me understand the issue a little bit better.
Jim?
A few issues. One, um, and it's, I guess it's a observation. There's been, uh, comments from abutters about the density of this project. And it came out at the last hearing. It's come out all the way through, um, in an area where some people expect there not to be dense development. I think the recent, relatively recent Supreme Court cases has suggested that as said, there is a presumption that a use permitted by a zoning ordinance is a reasonable use for the area or in that district. Um, our zoning ordinance with a special exception, which is the second issue, uh, allows this density. And I don't think this board has the right, and I think the court has suggested that, except in exercise of its, its planning jurisdiction, which is fairly limited, to impose its own density standards that are not reflected either in our regs or in our ordinance. If we're, and it's happened continually on large projects. We've gotten to the density phase and expressed discomfort with the project that's proposed that, but it complies with zoning. I can cite a number of examples, some of which haven't been built out for other reasons. And I think if we continue to have concerns with the density that our ordinance allows, we should address that as a, when we review our ordinance as an amendment because it keeps coming up. But absent that, um, like it or not, our ordinance does permit this density. And it seems they've complied with the regs and I, I'd be very hesitant for this board to say, well, we still think it's too dense. So, I, I, I appreciate the abutters' comments and if I were rewriting the ordinance, I might write it differently. But I, I think that's an issue that we, we have less jurisdiction over than we have discretion over. Um, on the special exception issue, um, life sometimes isn't neat. And this is a case where, um, our rules require as a condition of acceptance that the applicant has obtained ZBA application notice of decisions for any required special exceptions or variances. And that, the source of that in the statute six seventy-six colon four, where the planning board may establish the conditions for acceptance, what's considered a full application, complete application. We've done that in our regs. Two considerations. One is, as we've talked, this board has the right to waive its regulations. There's a recent statutory change that imposes some tighter standards on that, but we can do that. But second, um, and this is the, the messiness of this application. When this application first came before us, it had a special exception. It met the conditions of, that we impose for a complete application. That special exception had a time limit that, now, I think we would have said, in fact, did say, at that time, for an application of this complexity was probably unrealistic. Um, and during the course of our, towards the end of it, the, the special exception lapsed. But they did meet the tests, the requirements, when it was accepted. So, the question is, do you have to retain your application, that special exception status during the full process? The problem with that is, one, it allows, gives the people raising issues by dragging out the hearings, really the power to control whether or not the special exception stays in effect. Two, it grants to the ZBA essentially a power over this board to determine by putting a time limit, what applications we can hear. And we can't ignore or override zoning, but ZBA doesn't have the, sort of the implied right by putting time limits to divest us of jurisdiction, I don't think. And to deal with that sort of messy situation, that's why when we made the motion to reconsider and bring this forward, we required as a condition that it obtain a special exception for approval, but not for further consideration by this board. Now, there's been a distinction made between conditions precedent and conditions subsequent. And I've never quite grasped the distinction. But in my mind, a condition precedent is a condition that must be fulfilled before our approval is final. We grant conditional approvals. That's the nature of condition approval with conditions. The plan doesn't get signed, it's not a final approval until the conditions are satisfied. A condition subsequent, in my mind, is a condition that after the plan is final and they don't make, meet a condition, it's a condition of revocation. But the plan at that point is final. Nothing's been any suggestion that this application have final approval before it obtains a special exception. It's always been the intent that a special exception must, must be obtained. I would suggest that if we approve this with a condition that it obtain a special exception, that we have as a condition that we've made no findings as to any matter relevant to the ZBA's determination. There's no collateral estoppel, race duty card, or any of those other fancy Latin terms. That means ZBA is limited in its discretion. But essentially, we'd be restoring the status quo before the, the special exception lapsed. Now, is it possible a reasonable person could have a different position? Certainly. And we've, we've heard some, some good comments. Um, this is one of those rare situations where they had it, it lapsed during the course of a long continuation. I'm looking at what's the power of this board, what's the fair thing to do? And I think it would be to approve with the condition precedent for it becomes a final, um, approval that they obtain a special exception. We can put a time limit on that. If people are concerned about this, you know, getting to one of those continuations, that they have to do it within a certain reasonable time. So, we don't get, like we have in other projects, continuation after continuation. I think that would be reasonable. But I don't think it would be fair or compelled, um, to deny because they don't have the special exception now because it lapsed.
Thank you, Jim. That was a good explanation. I appreciate that.
Phil?
I have to say, I, I, I agree with Jim on both issues with the density because it is a, it is technically, it's a permitted use in that zone. As long as you meet the requirements, you go through the process. So, deny, to deny on, on grounds of, I think that's in conflict with what's allowed in the zoning as far as, as the density issue. And as far as the special exception, I think what's, what's important on Jim's explanation is, uh, the timeframe on it. Because, you know, this is twenty-three months. I mean, I've been, I've been on this board as a selectmen's rep with this project. I've been off for a year, was assigned to a different selectman. I came back here and we're still looking at the same project. Okay? So, this timeframe going on like that, um, I, I think, I, I think reasonably I have to take those into consideration, uh, you know, the timeframes. So, I, I, I fully agree with, with what you're saying. I, I think that's a very reasonable explanation.
Tim?
I would also like to thank Jim for explaining condition precedent and condition subsequent because I didn't know what either of them meant up until about five minutes ago. And, um, I do agree with Jim's reasoning, um, on both points. However, I feel that, uh, Collis and Mr. Peltonen have brought up good points that the town attorney. However, I feel that Collis and Mr. Pelton had brought up good points, that the town attorney's opinion may be required, because one resident has an opinion from their attorney, the applicant has an opinion from their attorney, and they are different opinions. So possibly a third opinion could help us make a decision that would be proper.
Barbara.
I think we're mixing the facts of this case with the, the big issue, the legal issue, our process issue. And I think the board needs to step back and separate it. Because the applicant said, in response to the comments, and I want to say I appreciate the length of the process. I was here as a selectman's rep years before Mr. Devanza hearing other applications, and I've been here more than once in the public when Mr. Coughlin has been here at some point with this application. But the applicant said it would be unreasonable to come to you and then go to the ZBA and then come back to you. Well, that was the process that the applicant picked. That was his choice. And granted, it was a mutual choice that apparently happened back on our motion, on the day of the motion, where I was surprisingly enough the lone vote in opposition. But we got here because of mutual choices by agreement. And I argued a few meetings ago that we needed to stop the process and address it before we got further down the road, because exactly what happens is happening now. The more you talk about something, the more it's in front of you, the more it becomes acceptable, even though when you go back to the threshold issue, that probably never was really okay. So what's the threshold issue? This board is considering approving a plan without the required approvals from the ZBA for a special exception. That's the bottom line. Not whether this applicant is being treated fairly or doesn't think it's right to have to go from here to another meeting back here. That's the bottom line. And, and this board is considering putting a major condition as a condition subsequent. And frankly, I'm a little dismayed to hear that board members don't really understand what it means, because we've just spent a few meetings talking about the Viking Orchards project, where you placed a number of conditions subsequent on it and apparently didn't understand what it meant. I took what you said literally, but I think you need to sort of look at it that way. Because part of the problem with the Viking Orchard is conditional approval that this board is wrestling with is because there was a list of conditions subsequent that are so convoluted and confusing at this point that no one knows where it stands. And we've had to have three meetings with that applicant and a specific request for an update on progress before we can even look at it again. Now, I bring that up because it's a condition subsequent issue and the board is wrestling with that. So what, before us tonight, is this plan with another condition subsequent. And Jim has suggested a time limit. And, I mean, I don't disagree with anything that Jim said. I just think that this discussion should have occurred a while ago. And I want to clarify for the record, when it was said in last meetings, that the, the ZBA approval was never a part of this. It's pretty clear from the record that planning provided us, that in the original motion, there was a contemplation of a ZBA approval. We just hadn't decided whether it was precedent or subsequent. It wasn't specified. And the applicant came to the next meeting and said, oh yeah, we, we know about that. And there was statements saying they should understand that that's needed. And they're here, and they're saying, first of all, their letter says, we don't want to get it at all. We're done with ZBA. Well, I think that the applicant, the letter from, I'm not saying that you wouldn't agree to do it. The, the letter request is to waive the requirements, to waive the requirement for the, for the ZBA exception. That's the written request. What Jim is talking about is making the special exception a condition subsequent. I'm not sure that the developer would disagree with that, but the request is waive it. Now, I've been told by board members more than once that we can do sort of whatever we want, because we have provisions. But you are opening yourself up to every application saying, what sense does it make to go back and forth? Give me the approval. I'll get the ZBA special exception afterwards. Just give me a condition subsequent. I am saying nothing about the merits of this plan. I am saying nothing about the fact the density is lower. I am saying nothing about this plan, because that's where I think planning board decisions, and many decisions, get convoluted, because the issue and, and the specifics get mixed. And I understand, you know, legal counsel and getting opinions, but any opinion is going to be conditioned on the facts of a case. And I will tell the board that if I am considering any sort of an application that requires ZBA approval, I'm going to come to this board first and say, I'll get it afterwards. Now, I don't think that's a good precedent for this board to set for every subsequent application we hear. Now, as to the facts of this case, the reality is, is that when the motion was made, we didn't know the status of the ZBA. But I think afterwards, we discovered at that point, their special exception hadn't expired, and it did. That was known to the applicant and the ZBA and came known to us afterwards. It's my understanding that subsequent to that, the applicant went to the ZBA and the ZBA said, we're not going to hear, between that time, the ZBA had said, we're not going to hear you. You don't have a plan for us to look at. Your application to the planning board has been denied. We don't know what you're here in front of us for. We don't have any application under our rules. And the applicant hasn't been back to them since then, they say, because it's unreasonable to go back and forth. If you want to say that they need to get a ZBA approval and, and continue this, that's a different issue. And, and Jim may say, it's not different. I'm doing the same thing. But you're not. And the, and the applicant knows you're not doing the same thing, because they know that an approval means something when you go to another board. So if this board is inclined to continue to consider this application, but thinks that the special exception is needed, why not stop this now, say, we have this, we will continue this, and get the special exception? Now, the ZBA may not be too fond of me for saying that, because I think they've had, you know, the same amount of meetings probably on this as a week, as the planning board has. But I don't see the benefit to this community of going forward. Jim said that there is a legal presumption that if a use is allowed by zoning, it's reasonable. Well, we're here on behalf of the town to sort of recommend those rules and follow those rules. Well, part of the rules that this board has proposed to the community is that before we approve a plan, certain things are needed. Certain major things are needed. And what you're saying now to the community is, you may have a document that you think we're going to follow, but this one thing that happens to be pretty big, we're going to let people do it afterwards, even though our documents say you need to do it before. You're saying that not only to developers or applicants, I don't, I'm, I'm not intending to put any connotation with it. You're saying that to applicants and to the people of this community. We have a provision that says we can waive, and when we want to, we will. So I would urge the board to consider that it would appear that there's some consensus for special exception is necessary. And I would urge the board to consider that acting like this is a condition, a precedent, for every other applicant before this board. And there's no reason why the applicant can't get it before we approve it. And it would give some opportunity to address some of the specifics with the documentation, so we're not faced with another situation where we're doing document review after conditional approval, you know, finding out what's going on. Because I have some specific things on the conservation easement, which was very peculiar to me, because I thought there had been a conservation easement for this project that had been proposed, that conservation had looked at in regards to another process. And that one's gone now, and now we have this. But that's getting into the specifics. So I promise to bring duct tape to the next meeting. And when you're all completely sick of me, you can all just lift it up and put it down. And thank you.
Tim.
I'd like to ask you a question, Barbara. Do you think there's a difference between an applicant who came to us with a special exception, as in this case, went through the process, had many, many delays because of all kinds of issues, then the special exception runs out? Versus the point you're making, that you're setting a precedent for anybody to come in here and say, I want an approval and I'll get my special exception later? Do you think there's a difference between those two applicants?
Yes, but I'm not sure I come to a different conclusion, because the applicant has some burden in the process too. And if the planning board process is not winding to a conclusion that is timely in conjunction with an approval granted by another board, they certainly have the opportunity to go to the other board to request an extension because of the failure of the other board to act. And I'm not aware of any such requests that gets turned down. As to the reality of this case and the example, I would argue that, again, such an exception to the process should not be allowed, because as the applicant himself said tonight, the plan is materially different. And I think that's what you run into when you approve plans with a bunch of conditions afterwards, or in a process like this, where we have had a major change in the plan, because what ends up happening is you have approvals for things that have changed substantially. So when people look at them afterwards, nothing ties together. You know, as a practical reality, the density of this is lower, right? If the density of this was higher, this board wouldn't be considering it for a minute. As, so as a process, I would suggest you shouldn't be treating it any different.
Well, then, as the applicant has acknowledged, the plan is materially different. And the, the plan is, is that way because of all the concerns raised by the board members and the public. And then they have made concessions and changes to accommodate the board's wishes. How can you hold that against an applicant?
I respectfully disagree that that's the reason for the changes. The applicant had numerous meetings to make those changes that we now see before we approved this plan or denied this plan. The plan we denied, that the applicant chose not to change to what's currently before us, was the plan that they went forward with. They only changed this plan after this board denied it. They rolled the dice, and this is what happened. This isn't a case where we were midstream in a continuous process of evaluating a plan, had never taken a final vote, and the applicant changed the plan. In this particular case, we took a final vote. The applicant was not happy with the final vote, which I was not a part of.
Barbara.
So it is different.
Please. We understand all that.
Well, Tim asked.
My suggestion is we take our eight-thirty recess and ponder a little bit and come back and talk about this some more. So the meeting is adjourned.
Adjourned.
Reciced.
Reciced. Excuse me. I don't want to go home this yet. I haven't had dinner yet. I'm hungry.
You'll be re-noticed.
Now, see, I went to the restroom before I came in, in the hopes that we might be having a break. I'm sorry if I told you. Oh, all right. Well, Alan. Barbara, so I thought maybe I was getting. Uh, no. Pretty well. It's got a good one.
How's the world turning? Good. You in any trouble?
Yeah. I bought a piece of property up on East Dunbar Road.
You did? Good for you. What are you going to do?
I don't think anybody was thinking that far ahead.
I've done that. That's good. Is that property bought up?
And I, I mean, I think Jim's argument is, is not a bad, but my problem is this is.
Bought up to Manchester?
No, 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 no.
On this side?
By Dunbar.
I find myself concurring with you that if the process doesn't get a special exception.
I lost the little, on considering this plan, okay? I mean, I lost it. So all I'm trying to do is prevent a major riposte in this board, in my opinion, for anybody else coming in. Oh, I don't know. I thought that was a, wasn't that a eleven o'clock at night motion?
Collis made a motion to deny the plan, and he, and he gave a, he gave a long dissertation about the reason why. And all the reasons, there wasn't a single, uh, chapter and verse.
Well, you know what, Tim, that's not be with the town planner that we have here, because he should be making sure the board doesn't make those kind of decisions. So anyways, and I don't think, and I don't think Jim was here.
No, he wasn't. And I voted in the nay on the night of the denial, because I thought we were wrong to deny that night.
So that's, I mean, right. So, I mean, I'm not saying that this process didn't get mucked up. I'm saying, you know, I just came from another board meeting where there's sort of a personnel issue and a budget issue. I'm like, you've got to separate the issues, because you're just end up mucking it up. I don't, I mean, and that's why I threw out, if you want to just continue this and go to the ZBA, because you know what? I think he's got a better chance of suing the friggin' ZBA. If he goes back for a, a special exception for this plan, for less units, and doesn't get it.
So you think that the proper thing to do is to, is to put this putting on hold. But you're saying is, I don't want it to come back up for review. But we agree that the plan is good right now? Yes. Or no? Okay, we agree the plan is good. We'll put a stay to the, to the, and if he takes the plan back, we just don't want him to come back with, you know, with another whole rack of, you know, the public is open.
I want to shoot the two catheters as much as anybody.
But they have their rights.
They have their rights.
Absolutely.
But you know what? The chairs need to run these meetings.
Lowell is a little bit softer than Alan is, and Alan is.
If Alan had been doing those meetings, they would.
He should come to a CIP meeting. I don't let anybody ramble. I shut them off. Even Fred Platt, my dear buddy. If we, if we, you know something? If we all had a consensus that the plan was good and we liked the plan, I would have no problem with putting a stay on the whole pro-process, put it in limbo until such a time as you get a, a special exception. Come back, we have one meeting, rubber stamp it, and go home. See you later.
I, I mean, I'm probably going to abstain from that, but I'm not going to say I don't like the plan, you know?
Even conservation has come out and said they like the plan.
Well, conservation hasn't said they've liked the plan. What they've said is, they've done what we've asked them to do. That's different than saying we support this plan. I think, and, and I don't ask any more of them.
I should look back at my mint, at my note, because sometimes they.
I'm not, I'm not going to ask them for any more than that. I mean, they've gotten out of the wetlands, which are probably growing as we speak.
And I agree with your, with your, your documentation on the, on the wetlands ordinance or the conservation easement, because conservation came in and told us for the Wharton Hill project.
They liked the.
That they thought the documentation from Bog Road was exactly what they wanted.
And we had it. And there were a bunch of typos and things that I wanted to correct. And I figured when I saw this, and then I got that, this, and I'm like, what the hell is this?
I don't, I don't understand all that.
My kids are doing great.
I'll bring you up the drainage question. Something on technical, you vote on, and I'll start you right out of your chair.
There is peace.
It's what side of the street we all sit on every day.
No, because that's the condition of your.
Panic when you weren't coming.
That you shouldn't, and, and it wasn't.
It was just a bad, bad.
I didn't know what a precedent was versus a subsequent. It never really, it never really came off the board. It never really, bandied back and forth like it was.
Get it coming now. Collis, if you're out too much, you just lose touch. But you don't be all the time. Because, you know, this is a perfect example. Things have been here for three years.
If you're on a month and not miss a beat, it's like a soap opera, you know? You don't see it for six months, you watch it. It's just.
Especially the important hearings come in when the job was zoning. I think those are, that's really the planning function, you know? And they, fortunately, in the fall.
See, a problem.
It would make it go. I want to know why there's a stake on mine.
They're required to go to ZBA. At your place?
Yeah.
How far in? Is it on your side of the wall or on their side? Is it on your side of the wall or on their side?
What they say is their side.
Which is on the wall. I didn't say, okay, that you're saying you're right away go.
No, no, no. I just want to know why they're throwing the gravel down, because, you know, they put in these supposedly open spaces that we're going to be wondering about. I haven't had an issue with them.
Because the ZBA is not going to, they don't care what we say, anyway. Nor should they. Yeah, they have an independent review.
No, I don't... Put that on condition. Yeah, because they must have been watching.
And we're done with it.
Not where mine is.
Well, that's a DPW request directly to the contractor. DPW that went out.
Oh, I know, and it's still going on.
Changes here, here, and here, and that's all we're doing.
So where to make enough?
8:30 break is over.
Here, we're really busting our chops.
I'm sitting right next door. She can slug me if she likes.
She probably will.
That's fine. I've been hit by other people. We won't do nothing, though.
I was at a meeting a week and a half ago. I sort of had it with 10 minutes left, and... Well, no, I sort of had it out. I mean, the chair came over after and shook my hand and said, "Thank you," but I swear to God, everybody was waiting to see if the person next to me and I were going to start slugging it out, because we sort of continued.
We know what happened to Phil.
The classics road issue.
Just need film.
No.
Like they're waiting on the slug under.
And if we want to, this, we can go home.
That's an issue which I'd like to poison the well early and often. I don't want to overstep my...
Early enough.
Mixing near the alleyway.
First of all, we'd get a 10-page written opinion, but at the end of it, we wouldn't be really sure.
Did you get an opportunity to see the space station pass over last night?
No, I didn't. Good time, I think.
Was it around about three nights ago?
No, we don't want to be back. Oh, I don't know. Last night was beautiful.
But I think I saw it.
Call this meeting back to order. I would like to at least get some edification on the pertinent aspects of our development regulations that refer to special exception. And I'd like everybody to get out their development regulation book and look at page 11. That's where I'm starting, in paragraph 2. And I'm only doing this to see if, one, we're in the right organizational chart.
I'm on the wrong page, because I don't have paragraph...
Page 11 of your development regulations, paragraph 2A.
Oh, okay.
And basically, 2 is about acceptance of a completed application. And my question to the board members are, is this an accepted application? And I believe, and it may be, correct me if I'm wrong, that we accepted this application. And if so, if you go to page 12 and go to D6, where it says, "ZBA application and notice of decision for any required special exception or variance." At the time we accepted this application, which was October 2007, I believe, all these items on this list were present, including the ZBA application, and that we had received a notice of decision references project at that time. Do I stand corrected, or is that in fact true? Barbara?
I think it can be argued that this process has two acceptance dates, because at the April 14 meeting, the motion was made, which set this process in place in regards to a continuation of this subject to certain conditions as to a new plan specifically recognizing that a special exception may be lapsed, and that it would be required for approval. So I think you're reading the correct zoning ordinance. I think it would appear that the motion made on May 14 may have waived that section of the development regs.
Well, whatever the case, but there is some action. And on the following page, on page 13, paragraph 4, "Review of Accepted Applications," which we did accept the application, "The Board's Action Under Paragraph A. Any portions of these regulations may be waived by the Board, where strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship and would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations." Can anybody explain that to me?
You want an explanation?
Yes, I do.
This, there's been a further amendment to the statute this year, but that provision was enacted in the statutes to provide some limitation or guidance to the board on when it can waive its regulations. The theory being, it's my understanding of legislation, people may have a different view, you know, boards were acting all over the place on waiving, which means the regs really have no meaning. So it was an indication by the legislature, I think, that there's, it's not a variance standard, but it's saying you've got to have some reason, and they expressed it, unnecessary hardship, and contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, which is picking up some of the themes of variances. You have to reason within the context of the purpose of the regs. And now...
Are those are the only two standards? You had alluded to standards on waivers.
And that's the statutory standard. And we've done it, I mean, we do it, for example, on road design to go to a more pedestrian, prosaic example, sidewalk design, I guess I should have said pedestrian, where, you know, it's easy to say why that's the case. It's not an unnecessary hardship. It would be, and not necessary. You can argue, and this is a closer question, obviously. My view, I think it's still, with the conditions that we've put on, it still meets that test, but somebody else could take a different view.
Collis, have you got any insight for the board members?
I'm still confused as to the process. We got an application, and it has the required ZBA approval. And the process begins and continues, and is still continuing when the clock strikes 12 on the ZBA approval. What do we do as a board? Do we stop and say, "Sorry, your ZBA approval just became invalid. We can't proceed. You've got to go back to the ZBA to get some sort of continuation of that?" I have a concern that when we're dealing with difficult applications that are, we are considering and taking public hearing comment over a protracted period of time, it's possible for those who oppose any particular application can, for lack of a better word, and I don't mean this in a derogatory sense, filibuster the board to the point where the ZBA approval runs out. That doesn't seem right. And I don't know how to deal with that, because that's really what's happened here. I mean, the public hearing dragged on to the point where it just went on and on and on, that the 12 months elapsed, and poof, there it goes. Now what do we do? Barbara, you have any?
Well, you know, on this threshold issue, it seems to me that when we accepted the application, there was a special exception, and this process did drag on for a lot of different reasons. But, you know, we, the question is whether or not they need to, we need to stop the process, and they need to get the ZBA approval now for the special exception, or whether we make it as a condition. And I think that we have the authority to waive that if we think it meets the standard. And I agree with Jim that I think, in this instance, under these circumstances, that I think that a waiver is appropriate.
Phil?
May I? You can go back to me. I just have...
Okay. I'll recognize you again.
Two things. One, I'm here as a planning board member, not attorney. And I'm willing to recognize that sometimes difficult decisions in the end have to be made by the people wearing the black robes. And this is one of those difficult issues that we could be right or wrong, and somebody can appeal it, and a judge can tell us that. And that's okay. That's the process. We try to grapple with ultimate truths, but in the end, we got to process applications. So I, one way or the other. I've already said my position.
Phil?
I think that the circumstances that this application is involved with do justify waiving the special exception for this purpose. I mean, the applicant came, and the applicant had met all the conditions. And as stated before, I mean, I'm just restating the fact. They came, they applied, it was accepted, they had met it, they had the ZBA approval. This is, I'm just repeating how long this process dragged out. It ran out, and exactly as was previously mentioned. What do you do? Does that mean that you stop and say you go back? I said, "We continue, we move on." But to go on, maybe they have to, whether they have to get it is the determination of what we decide if it's required.
Tim?
If this board was to conclude that the special exception needed to be in place prior to the approval, and would recommend a stay of the proceedings till such a time, a decision prior to that needs to be made as to the plan itself. If the board was to decide that they need to go get their special exception first, then the board needs to decide whether the plan is adequate, so that we do not send them off to get their special exception while everything is on hold, and then come back and start a whole new review process, and start changing the plan again. So if the board was to go in that direction, I think the board, I would like to see the board make a decision on the plan, per se, prior to making a decision on whether they are going to send them for their special exception to receive a final approval.
Barbara?
I have one other point I just want to clarify.
Yes.
I don't think there's been a suggestion by this board that they waive the requirement as a condition of approval. The only thing we're grappling with is, do we approve it with that as a condition, or do we not approve and send them first? But I don't think this board is discussing waiving at some zoning compliance. I don't think we can do that.
That is correct. Yes, Collis?
And I think what, Tim, what you're saying is the equivalent of a conditional approval, saying, "Yeah, the plan's fine. We're ready to approve it. You just need to go get the ZBA before we're going to do that." I mean, to me, that's the equivalent of a... Except that if you want to follow the letter of the law, then you're doing it by that means, requiring them to come back with their special exception prior to the actual granting of the approval, if that's the avenue that the board chooses to take. I just don't want it to come back for more discussion.
Well, the chair would prefer a motion to waive the requirement for a special exception. She said no, two minutes ago. That's her prerogative.
People kept talking, Mr. Chairman. You started to let it, you know, ricochet across the table, and I was just waiting for it to come back.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you said something, because I was hearing two different things. A waiver of the requirement at all, and the requirement for some sort of a ZBA special exception. So I do think there are two different things being discussed by members here of the board. So I'm glad that you said that, because I think that needs to be clarified in regards to Tim's point. During the break, we discussed the conservation easement, which looks substantially different to both of us than one we had seen previously. And, you know, my only concern, along with everything I've already said, in regards to approval with just these subsequent conditions, is that some of these documents really do look different, and I don't know why. And I don't know whether, you know, I think these documents were presented to be done as they are, and I don't know whether any approval would have that or not, because I know conservation had a previous conservation easement that they liked a lot better. And well, just, not that we're opening this up, but when there was discussion by the conservation in regards to the open space development on Shirley Hill, there had been presented an easement that had been given to the planning board on the Bog Road development that the conservation easement, the conservation commission liked so much, they wanted to adopt that language.
That was mine.
I understand that, but it's not what's in the package. And that's the type of thing. I'm just wondering where that would get cleared up in this process.
The public comments are closed, Kathy.
Oh, there's a document, it's a notice of decision for...
Public comment is closed. Collis?
Can I make a couple more comments? I agree with you, Barbara. I think I'm more comfortable with a conditional approval rather than waiving the requirement. I think, is that the distinction you were trying to make? Did I catch that properly?
Well, no, there are some people on the board who suggested you could waive the requirement.
That's what I heard.
Excuse me. If you look under the recommendations on page 19 of your packet, item number two is what we're specifically being asked to enact, which is basically the waiving of the requirement that they have the ZBA before we would consider the application. And that it's not a requirement, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it does not waive their responsibility to get a special exception, to get a permit to construct this project. They still have to go back to the board and get that special exception from the zoning board of adjustment, period. We're waiving the requirement that says that it has to be part of, it has to be in process or received before we would consider the application as accepted, which we've done on October 2007.
Alan, I respectfully disagree, because if you continue down onto page 20, "B conditions subsequent to plan approval do not include ZBA..."
We're not discussing that. We're not discussing that at the moment. We can amend that.
I think...
Stephen?
I think it's clear that this project requires a special exception. The question the board's wrestling with is, do you do it before you vote on approval or after you vote on approval? Or is it a condition of the approval, or do you continue this and say, "Go get a special exception and come back, and then we'll consider the approval." It's a zoning requirement to have it before you sign the...
Before I sign the papers.
And, but, but you could do either way, towards pleasure, in terms of saying, "No, we want it achieved before we'll vote a plan approval or disapproval," or you're going to vote. Or, "No, you will vote something on the plan and say, 'It's a condition of approval, therefore you have to go get it,' at that point."
Jim?
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I don't want to do that if you're not done.
We're done.
Okay. I will, I will make a motion. At 1, in its following steez, right up on page 19, 1 will be as written, except the staff who will for the relocation... on page nineteen, one will be as written, except the staff rule for the relocation of the driveway, uh, on lot eighty-seven dash six dash one, as a non-material change for a previously approved subdivision. Um, two, I think we changed the wording, that we find that the, uh, prior, uh, application, uh, prior acceptance as a completed application is not, um, rescinded on the basis of the lapse of the special exception during the pendency of the consideration of this application, uh, in that, to the extent that, uh, any, uh, regs would require the special application, special exception to be in effect at the time we act on the application, we waive it, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. I think that more closely states where we are. Three.
Do you, do you wanna do all three, or do you wanna do the two first, and then open discussion for three?
I, I think that's probably, given the, you know, tension that I have, and probably others have, that would be a good move, so I'll stop talking.
Do I hear a second to Jim's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Steve. Any discussion on the motion? And I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Six to one. Motion is approved.
Okay. Next, before we move on, I, I'm going to ask a, in a discussion mode, on, you look at condition three A, small Roman numeral one, which is, uh, as a condition precedent, so this is a condition that must be fulfilled before the board, I mean, excuse me, before the plan is signed, before the approval becomes final, they must have a special exception. And I figure, if this selectman's representative events are, with Tim, who, um, suggested that we impose a time limit on when that needs to be attained, so it doesn't drag on with indefinite continuance.
None of me either.
But if, if you think that's appropriate, I'd like to, I'd like to discuss it and put it into this motion before we actually make the motion.
Okay. And now, in the, in Mitch's motion here, I'll open that s, one specific topic up for discussion. Tim.
How can we put a time limit on something that, are you gonna give them opportunity to extend it if the court doesn't rule in their, in one way or the other over a period of time? So, to be open for extensions?
Yeah, you could do that.
I mean, you couldn't, you can't just set a time limit, and then the court would drag on for a month longer than our own. We'd be doing something wrong. So, consider that part of it.
Any other discussions on that one point? Okay, Jim, would you continue, please?
I have, I have a second, second point, I'd like for discussion purposes.
Okay.
And it relates to the documents and any other technical terms. I would recommend, just as we did on a prior application, that, well, if you look to Steve's, um, uh, three A, Roman numeral, small Roman numeral five, a conformer hearing or a compliance hearing, I would wanna broaden that to encompass all of the documents, and, 'cause, um, Barbara's has concerns, I have some concerns. I don't think they're, they're not showstoppers, but they're tweaks, and I would, you know, and all, those can be cured, and I would want, want them re-vetted by town council and come back to us. But I would do that as a compliance hearing, as a, a later hearing. Uh, so I would, I'd, I'd wanna, I'd wanna address it that way, and then we can spend the rest of the evening going through them if we're not compelled to. And the other, uh, issue I'd, I'd add, um, is, is that this expressly in our condition, we're not making any findings, uh, relevant to the ZBA's grant for a special exception, um, as a, as a further condition of the approval. So, I would, as I make a motion to approve, subject to all the provisions in sub-paragraph A, three A, that there be, um, paragraph three A, Roman numerals five, be amended to a compliance hearing or conformer hearing, to consider all of the, I'll call them the accessory documents, which are all of the written documents attached to our package, the easements and so forth, that will occur after, uh, review by the conservation commission and review by town council paid for by the applicant. And as an additional condition, that we expressly make no finding as to any matters, uh, required for the ZBA to grant or deny a special exception to this project, including those listed in section fifteen point three point two of the ordinance.
That, that particular paragraph in the ordinance is a reference to what subject?
Special exception.
Okay. As noted.
Okay. And I have one other question, if I can pull away.
Yes.
Is it condition subsequent, and this is similar to that other big project we have, Barbara, the, the, of, these are conditions subsequent after the plan is recorded, uh, we don't want those out there forever, so we should put a time limit on them, so we don't get into the project on the hill. Um, I guess I'd seek a recommendation as to what those should be.
Six months?
I don't know what's reasonable.
Board members?
Provide some guidance. Judge and Phil.
Well, the Judge and Phil, I think we probably have, at the present time, he's probably updated or arranged. I don't know the status of sewer commission and water precinct. Obviously, we can talk about road names forever.
They, they apply, and, and.
Well, there's a process.
There's a process. Fire department approves in terms of nine-one-one, and it goes to board of selection. So, that's a fairly short process.
Okay.
And, and my guess would be, is six months would be sufficient, because it's not, this isn't like the.
Well, and it's not six months from today. It, it, okay, now, let's, and Stephen, I apologize to the board for my erroneous reading. Part of my issue is, is that the plan approval slash recording appears on A and B. So, really, A is conditions preceding to plan approval slash signing, right?
That's, yes.
And B is conditions subsequent to plan signing prior to rec, prior to recording, or subsequent to recording within six months. I mean, you know, that's.
It'd be subsequent to recording, but if you had a time limit to it, it would be the time limit.
Jim.
Or, or not records, where you're.
Jim.
Why don't we make those conditions precedent?
Right, right. I mean, that's.
Record anything.
Yeah.
That's.
So, is that what you're suggesting, Barbara, is it should be changed to conditions precedent instead, rather than subsequent?
Right, 'cause otherwise, we end up with recorded plans that.
Right. Some stuff hasn't been done.
The stuff hasn't been done, and I know things are on the plan, but we all know things get missed.
Would you?
I'm gonna amend my motion.
Okay, the, the, the motion is amended to change the word subsequent to precedent in paragraph B.
Yeah, they're.
We're just listing.
They'll be added as three B, as additional conditions precedent, and strike the heading conditions subsequent to plan approval.
Okay.
Now, do we need a time limit? What's, what's our, our regs govern? How long conditional approvals hang out there? It's a year now.
It, it's a year now, normally, and you can continue them.
Okay.
Uh, one of the conditions is to get the ZBA approval, which will, may take longer time. Some of these are much shorter.
Unless we grant them extension later, they have a year. That's our, that's our default.
That's correct.
So, it'll be one year with extension?
And we could extend it at that time, but I'm not here to grant an extension now. I think that's the motion.
Do I hear a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Phil. Any discussion in the motion? I'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm gonna abstain. I'm not opposed, but I'm very concerned about the process, so I have a hard time voting for it.
One abstention, Barbara. Motion carries.
Did you vote, Mr. Chair?
I voted affirmative. We have some other business before us this evening. Basically paperwork.
If I can find it from my pile of stuff here that I threw all over the place.
You might just be giving your notes on documents, if you can be used. I will pass them on.
Yeah, doing this stuff. I would like to journey back forth to the minutes of July twenty-third, uh, two thousand nine.
Motion to approve as previously amended prior to tabling.
Second.
It's tabled at my request to find something out. I wasn't able to get in contact with the person, and the issue was rendered moot by our subsequent motion on.
I think point of order.
The development.
We need a motion to take them off the table.
So.
Oh, sorry. I knew they were on the table.
So, we have a motion to take them off the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Carlos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It's off the table. Motion for approval, I'll accept at this point in time.
So moved.
Seconded by Jim.
I just, Phil had made an amendment to them, and the, and I'm incorporating that.
Okay. Then the motion was seconded for approval of the minutes by Phil originally.
That's correct, and they were tabled with that motion.
Okay. Excuse me. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Abstaining.
Abstention by Steve.
Let the record reflect, I have voted for something two times in a row now.
Well, there'll be a third one, because we'll consider the August thirteenth, two thousand nine minutes.
Woo-hoo. I'm not even gonna make my corrections, I'm so excited.
What do we have?
I don't have any.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I'll second Phil's motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Two abstentions, Steve and Carlos. Motion carries. Chair voted affirmative. Zoning amendment, that's Stephen.
Uh, I believe that, and, and we talked about several options, and, uh, the one, item one is to allow the potential for the variation under mixed-use development, which it appeared to be the board's consensus by discussion. And the second one is because the legislature changed their language again on variances, and this refers to the RSA as amended, therefore you don't have to look at it again. Uh, if you want those two to go forward, I'd suggest, and this is way off, but I think we have no other zoning amendments to consider, and these would go to your normal December hearing, uh, which is when you normally do it, unless there's some other things you want to consider for changes.
Mr. Chair, the.
Yes.
The zoning issue I raised earlier is, is density, and whether we concluded through the course of hearings of a large project that were, uh, ordinance permits to high density. I don't, I don't, I don't know if I have an opinion on that, I'm just concerned that we, we bump into our comfort zone before we bump into the maximum permitted by zoning. And that suggests to me that we wanna look at that.
Maybe the consideration of that is in coordination with our C-TAP final report on build-out for the town, or how does that play out?
That's, you and I will be dead and gone before that.
You might be. I'll still be here. Phil.
Well, just one other thing along that line about when you get into density. Uh, one of the things that, um, you get a lot of the, uh, portion of, of town that's up around Snook Road, you know, thirteen, up along Dunbarton, you have larger parcels up there. Um, and I don't know, I've been off the board for a while, so I don't know if there's been discussion, not that I'm aware of, but on some of those, uh, those areas, because you, of, of the infrastructure that's out there, of changing the, changing the requirement, uh, from two acres to five acres, similar to what Dunbarton has, uh, they've had for a while. I mean, part of it, uh, is because of, of just the infrastructure and difficulty of providing servant, uh, municipal service, emergency services on that area. It gets down to a den, a density issue, as, you know, we're looking at. In other words, requiring five acres for a building lot rather than two up in that area.
Okay. Any other board members? Barbara?
Same subject, or different subject?
Same subject.
Any subject, zoning amendments.
I, another, I think one way to sort of, I think that I would concur that there's, the comfort level is not matching up with the calculations that are getting done, is maybe how we do the calculations, for example, you know, for yield plans, and what we take out, and what, to get to that buildable area. Maybe we need to take another look at that, because it does seem that it, they're not meeting the sort of, I don't, I don't, it just, they're not meeting this, the common sense result that you think, when you, when you're familiar with the parcel, and you walk it, and after a few years, you've got a pretty good idea of what slopes are, and drainage issues, and, and maybe, maybe we need to look at those as a way of managing the density issue, because there does seem to be something off. I mean, you know, there's always an adjustment when you look at a parcel, and you say, okay, now picture, you know, a house on two-acre lots. I mean, even when it's sort of what we know is okay. I mean, that's an adjustment. But when you get to these bigger parcels, and they're coming in and saying, this is how much is there, it just, I, there've been application after application, that people are sort of going, that doesn't seem to look right, but you do the calculation, and that's what it comes out to. You know, I was at something earlier tonight, in, in, in another community, talking about what they require for soil, for the soil test, in regards to the, what can be built, and, and what the area is that you need, and it's very different from what we have. I, I'm wondering whether we need to look at it from maybe that approach, rather a two-acre versus five-acre.
The chair would like to just say that we saw an example of, we'll hear it, on Bog Road, of that thirty-five or thirty-seven acres. There isn't four, you know, twenty-five percent of that lot is buildable, and you can't get to but five percent of it on the road, without crossing wetlands. So, there are some serious constrictions on many of the remaining properties in town, as, in strictly wetlands. I mean, if, uh, and, and when we did the Sanborn one, recently, we got four lots out of sixty-five acres.
Yeah, it had a prime wetland on it.
So, so it has a prime wetland on it. So, I think it, you're right, and maybe there's some defining issues here that might help us determine density, but, uh, we also have to take into effect that we need some kind of visual thing that says, this is what's left in town. It's right there. It's all rolled up right there. I've been doing it for a year. I'm gonna give it to Steve tonight.
Show it to the board? I, I think we can have a discussion on this, but there are three ways, I see, three ways to tweak. One is wetlands, and we've done that, and we change our wetland conditions. Two is our calculations, our formula. Three is just the number of units we permit per acre.
I guess, yeah.
Which is, because we're really running into this on the multifamily, or the, you know, the, the, the cost of the, the dense development. I, I, I'm not, I'm less unhappy, how's that for making ratification, with the single-family development things, because it's, it's moving in the right direction, but it's the multifamily that we tend to gag. This was an example. We had trouble, they reduced it, but they work in compliance as zoning, and they first came in. And we didn't like it, and that tells me something. Our, our number, maybe two dads.
Well, you, you know, you, that particular case was where some of the dry land you couldn't get to, accounted as density, but you couldn't get to it. And, and that would make us run that problem. The other thing we do is we, we let them calculate on fifty-foot, but we, no requirement to build with a hundred. So, that's, again. So that's, again, one of the things that was done, as we've made changes, to not squeeze people who have small pieces of property and have some wetlands on it. I just, the board discussed it specifically.
There's one word you have to add to that density. It's called contiguous.
Okay.
That's a word. It has to be contiguous buildable area, not, I've seen it beat, you know, each little patch of buildable area has been counted and it adds up. And that, we're confronted with it. It needs to be contiguous, so that if you've got this big area that's buildable, that's the density you can put there, not because you've got another half acre over here you can't get to or another quarter acre, and I think that would be an easy thing to do.
I guess I'd suggest, you know, Steve, run this through his intellectual mill and come back. We can have our presentation on some choices and then give some direction, because I, you know, we do have different ways of solving what I see as a problem.
And I see some properties in town that would be very difficult, if not impractical, to develop, and those should be our prime concern in terms of either conserving or acquisition or whatever, so we can ensure that nothing happens on those properties.
Yes, one other, the other component to that is, you always shudder when you create zoning districts, but this application we just heard was within the R-one or R-two district, but it's not downtown. So do we, do we take these outlying R-residential districts and impose some further restriction and create a close-to-town R-one and R-two and an out-of-town R-one and R-two?
Yeah, I mean, I-
It's harder to do, but-
No, but you, I think you are a little, you know, right, that if, if this were in the middle of town, first of all, you probably don't have a wetland. You probably have a contiguously built lot, and you really might be interested in having the density where you can walk everything, because it's close. And this, you'd say, well, you can sort of walk, that's why they wanted a walking path, you know, it's, but it's really at the far edge of it, but it is an R-one. And there's some other property closer in, and you'd say, well, if you were on that, where you're only a hundred yards down from Main Street, you know, you might feel different about the density filling it up. So that's another kind of issue of how close you are to your centers, where you, you know, it's a bigger issue or not. But I can, I can look at some ways and bring back three or four ways, and that's good, because I need to know what the issues are you wanna deal with. That's all.
Chair?
Steve, planning board amendment number one. In the explanation area below it, you have, provide the planning board with greater discretion. What do you mean by that? Which direction do we have greater discretion?
Well, the question was, and we saw it when we start getting the differences between down where the Rite Aid was, and we said, we're all comfortable that's a mixed-use project. These pieces sort of fit together, they work very well. And that housing was allowed to have sort of a drive-in, so you could have a sign that says, here's my housing area. I don't have to get to it through the shopping center, but I come out of the light, and we had some access seats and pedestrians, and it really worked probably very, very well for a mixed-use project. That appears to be the intent of what we were trying to do. You get though up in the Tetro Drive area, and the object is not to turn that into a housing district, no question, but the properties are all quite different. And you have those properties that sit on Tetro Drive, a public street, and they can all be commercial very easily. And any mixed use that happens, or any housing that happens, you expect to be sort of behind it, is what would be normal in the front there. But you have other parcels that are in that zone, may have a house on them now, but at some point in time is a very little tiny parcel. And you may wanna say, well, on that little parcel, we wanna let housing happen, and the ratio of X percent is not relevant. It's not turning this thirty-acre parcel into a housing project. It's a half-acre parcel with a little multifamily building on it connected sewer and water, might be much more appropriate, depending on where it is. And it's a problem again of trying to write an ordinance that fits all of those conditions.
Well, how does it, I'm sorry.
And the object is, is to give the board, when they look at the plan, and say, given where this piece of property is, even though it's all in the same district, we wanna be able to treat it a little differently. Or we wanna do it in a process and not just sort of wander through and have it happen.
It gives us the opportunity to determine the mix.
Well, do we wanna specify that the mixed use has to be on the same property by the same owner? Because what we have is the application before us where two owners have joined up to provide us with a mixed use.
I understand.
So this is what I'm trying to ask you about. Is this going to facilitate those types of developments?
I think you, I think you may want a choice. I mean, in the other place, there was an owner of the whole open space when it started, and then it split apart and now has different owners. Tetro Drive, it's clear that those buildings around Tetro Drive is one owner, and everything else in the district going to Henry Bridge are all different owners. There's not one owner. You know, there's one larger parcel where the landscaper is, and there's one larger parcel across. But other than that, you may want to allow, now, if two owners give you a plan together, they're committed to let you, you make things happen on either side of the fence. I mean, they put them together.
I'm just concerned about, you know, the creation of the flex zone for the possible tax benefit of the people in Gostown, and then because of a law, or amendment that allows them to put in eighty residential units down there, we're impacting the schools and everything else, and I don't know if that's what that zone was designed for, and if we should continue to allow those types of things in areas like that. And understandably, the economy is bad and people can't sell a commercial building, but that shouldn't be the logic for allowing multifamily houses to go in in our industrial areas.
I think everybody needs to read the master plan. There's a lot of work gone into that master plan, and you really need to look at that one-fourteen corridor study in detail. You need to read it again and highlight what you think of the important facts, because it talks about all those issues, and how it should be accommodated in all, in that stretch of road from Wallace Road all the way right through to Pernodville. And I think it's very important, because that's, if you were to try to pick a place where growth should happen, it happens to be in that stretch of road because of the availability of everything that's there.
Of the road plus sewer and water.
Road plus sewer and water. Even if it has its own intrigue because of the hillside and rock and whatever, doesn't mean it's not developable.
I understand it.
And I think everybody should read the master plan. Dig it out.
Let me schedule a workshop, you know, and Steve comes back with his grapple, this one too.
I think it would be a good idea just to, I think we should be visiting the master plan every year, because it's a thing in flux and needs to be looked at more often than every ten years, in terms of how it gets adopted and how it gets implemented.
I frankly would rather talk about this when you're, I'm fresh at Southern, and Barbara can stay awake later and I can't.
Oh, well.
Can I just add something to the list of consideration?
Yes, Barbara.
Thank you. On setbacks, I'm noticing that, first of all, as the years have gone on, we've all noticed that houses being built just get bigger and bigger and bigger on lots, which is fine. Land is expensive. People wanna put up their house. What I'm also noticing is, is that the ZBA is getting a lot of applications for DAX and all sorts of little things that owners decide they wanna put on after the fact, that when they're building the house or buying the house, they don't think about or don't get specked in, and they have to come in because they don't meet the setbacks, and everybody has built these big houses as close to the sides as they can, and I think it needs to be looked at.
I'll check with Derek on what they're getting.
Is there a setback that's a function of building size?
Well, there's two calculations that have done, but-
Yeah, I mean, you could.
There's a percentage of the lot, and there's also a setback issue, and the percentage of the lot is not usually the issue.
No, I didn't.
It's that you get lots where maybe because they have water and sewer, or for whatever reason, that frontage piece, which is where people tend to put the house, because it's cheaper, you know, you're not going way back.
Many advanced tables in terms of zoning have what's called at the end called FAR, floor area ratio, which is a ratio that you determine. It's in the ordinance, and then chart, which says you can do a ratio. If you have a buildable area of five thousand square feet on there, you can build twenty-five percent of it in-house. That's the biggest footprint you're gonna have. And that's something that's right there and tabbedized for every zoning district.
But I think Barbara's right that that, when you're dealing with higher densities, it's much more reasonable. You start doing a single-family two-acre lot and you're far as point zero zero three. I mean, it starts being a non-meaningful number compared to downtown Manchester.
That's correct.
And where it can be very useful. But I think what I will do is look at the variances, the kind they're having. Are they side yard variances, or are they front yard variances?
They tend to be side and rear.
Because of the deck being added.
Primarily side, because that's what they've done. They've put a driveway in the house and, you know.
And all the lots are lousy and there's no room left to build a house on.
Yeah. Well, and that may be the case, it may be, but a lot of times, if you have a lot of variances, it means you might have an ordinance change needed.
Because they're really not very much, the setbacks. They're not very much.
Okay. I will, I will look at that issue also.
Thank you.
Do you wanna set a date for that? One, it gives me a target, and two-
I would say October, sometime in October, so that we can consider and then have it formulated in terms of December, which is when it has to have a public hearing?
Do it in October.
I think October.
Well, our meeting is on the eighth and the twenty-second. There are actually five Thursdays in October.
Five Thursdays? Okay.
Are you, are you suggesting five meetings?
No.
No.
I hope not.
Yes, I wanna finally be a yes on a motion that loses.
I already go to four meetings a month in the summer.
What is, what's the board's?
Fall is a nice time to be out.
If you're in the light, pick a date, Stephen. Tell us where we're gonna be here.
Enjoy your company, Barbara.
Middle of the month.
What's the middle Thursday, Barbara?
Fifteenth? Yeah, the first, the eighth, the fifteenth, the twenty-second, and the twenty-ninth, so we have eighth and-
Fifteenth of October.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get November.
Yeah, and we only have one meeting in November because of Thanksgiving, because the second will be on October.
I have one meeting a month in the winter.
Can we go to?
We got two other items?
Yeah, let's go to the ten-year road plan, because I think a little explanation, the CTAP, I can-
Okay. Let me tell you about the ten-year road plan.
I've never seen this thing.
I like this thing. I really like this.
Okay. The road plan is, as approved by the legislature, every two years they update it. They're in process of doing that again. Hearings get set in the October timeframe. We have one actually in town. I think it's late October. And Manchester, this started with Manchester, I think, who, and understand that this plan, because of expenditures, is really a thirty-year plan, and different DOT chairmen have chopped it down. It's probably, it's probably a fifteen-year plan now. But if you aren't on the plan, you don't, you don't work towards anything. So even if you don't know about a road particularly in detail, it needs to be on a plan as a project. So Manchester wanted this, to get back on the plan, primarily because the exit six is overloaded and should have a total redesign, and because it's picking up the back road, it's picking up Dunbarton Road, Front Street, everything was coming from exit six. And secondly, the exit, as it is now going into Hooksett, is one-way and one-direction, et cetera, in exchange. And then, given what they're trying to do around the school, which is on this picture just south of the black line, they said, well, if we could connect Front Street and the Everett Turnpike and Dunbarton Road, we'd like to get that project back in our process, and it's a four-way intersection. And so they called Southern Hampshire and Manchester, called us to see if we'd buy into that, and I looked at it and said, you know, why doesn't that connect to the back road? Because we can't run trucks down the back road. The whole back road piece through Manchester runs all the traffic through residential. It's very close and no setbacks, and if it were to connect, our industrial park that can't run trucks could run trucks. And the through traffic that comes down to the back road from other places and comes through us could get to the Turnpike, and it would be better for Manchester, and therefore it'd really help both of us. And the mayor, et cetera, said, hmm, that sounds good. And so the plan now is, continues as my black line is. And the process will be that they will probably very shortly ask the Board of Selectmen to endorse this as a town, to put this back in the plan. And so I've brought it to you, because you undoubtedly will be asked to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, so we've sort of jump-started it, because the hearings are in October. So I would recommend that the reinstatement of exit seven on I-293, that connects Gostown Road, Dunbarton Road, Everett Turnpike, and Front Street, be put back in the ten-year plan.
So moved.
And this is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to support.
To the Board of Selectmen, to support.
There is a second. Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and then the last item is the-
You won't see it in twenty years.
No, you may not, and-
Yeah, but you might.
The mayor, the mayor-
A lot of the land is actually already gone.
The ten-year plan is never a ten-year plan.
It hasn't been a ten-year plan ever.
Yeah, and depending on how much pressure you get from Manchester, they got a lot of-
The CTAB build-out study, we could ask them to come back, but the other way to deal with this is to say, here's some constraints we'd like you to test. And one of them, Barbara, is like yours, to look at five acres in sort of the far suburban areas and see what it does. Okay.
We have a motion by Jim, seconded by Barbara.
What's the motion?
To move ahead with this, the CTAP study in terms of the five-acre zoning study.
Have these, have all these constraints.
With those constraints.
With the constraints. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes no.
Dinner, we're done.
No, not yet. We have a letter from Mr. Shakaroff, which we have to do something about. My suggestion is to recommend that this letter be passed on to the appropriate town agencies for consideration and maybe report back to us for once about what they're gonna do about it. Jim? Two, Tim, excuse me. I'm getting old.
I'm getting late. I think you can pass this letter on, but I don't think we, anybody is required to make any comments at all about this letter.
Yeah, I agree.
We, we, that, that plan was reviewed by the police department and given its blessing. You know, for him to talk about how he had a conversation with a police officer is totally inappropriate. We also got a traffic study from there, and the police reported no accidents at the Bog Road Route thirteen intersection, if my memory serves me correct. That's why the, that skewed angled intersection was deemed not a dangerous intersection. Lori Rocio, I think, was the name of the traffic engineer in there. So I, where I feel it's appropriate to have other agencies view this letter, I do not feel that we are required or should feel obligated to make any comment.
So we'll pass it on to the chief for his information?
I agree.
Well, it's up to the chair to decide who gets it.
My suggestion is to pass it on to whomever the planning staff thinks it should go to and let them act on it.
I would pass it on.
I'd send it to the police.
You work for the state?
I would suggest you send it to the police department and the school board, because they bring schoolchildren in cars into it.
Okay.
And as was said at the meeting earlier, it sounds more like an enforcement issue than a bearing issue on the project. And as was said at the meeting earlier, it sounds more like an enforcement issue than, than a bearing issue on the project.
And, and, and other correspondence, it's noted that several other towns are doing wireless antennas all over the country, and they wanna know if they're, affect us, and does anybody think that, that in Greenfield it would affect us, or Francis Town?
You talking about cell towers?
Yes.
You make phone calls better.
No twenty-mile radius.
Have more cell towers in the next three years coming because of the.
Tell them we want those lights on them, though Tim and I can't see.
I can't see them.
Because, because of the amount of, the amount of information that is starting to go over them, especially with the, especially with, you know, the new phones, the smartphones that have all the data transmission on them.
They can watch TV.
They're overloaded, and the, and the towers can't move them, AT&T is, is their, the amount of money they're gonna be putting in the next three years to increase cell towers, so we'll be seeing more of that.
Throw your cell, throw your cellphone in the river when you go over Henry Bridge.
Do you have any more business, Mr. Chair?
Tax map, thirty lot forty-nine, and it's fifteen Shirley Park Road. Do you, can you tell me, is that somebody down on the, Amasaki wants to do something, is that what this thing is?
Can you tell me what that is, because I don't.
Amasaki is below Shirley Park.
Do we have that in our packet?
Nah. This is just a, somebody's applied for a Shoreland Protection Act permit through DES.
Yeah.
What is our, I'm, I'm curious, is what is our action on these kinds of things?
Nothing normally, there, we, we get notice.
Advisory.
The FYI, right?
It's just a FYI?
We have no authority.
I'm just, it's in the pile of stuff, you've given me this all.
It's so efficient.
More would have passed that right over. Before you go any further in your pile of stuff.
I'm at, at the end of the pile. Yes, I'll, I'll, identity, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Already done.
Not everybody.
Second.
No discussion at all, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.